Your order, if you please, rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Burgoyne, Girbaugh, Sibokanek, Rhodes, and Roth. Mayor Protem Tahar is absent. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, and DPW director Fordice. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you, council member Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Sibokanek. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, the motion carries. At this time, I would seek a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Tahar.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to my mid-year State of the City address, and you should all have a hard copy in front of you this evening. So, good evening, city council, city manager Campbell, city clerk Royal, and my fellow citizens. I'm honored to provide a mid-year update on the progress we've made as a community. When I first began my campaign for mayor more than two years ago, I talked about the paramount importance of responsibly managing city finances. In a sense, I've never thought of them as a city dollars. These resources belong to the residents and business owners who live and work in our community. For that reason, I believe we have something of a moral responsibility to be pragmatic in the way resources are invested. Because of tough but appropriate decisions we've made over the course of the last two years, I'm very proud to announce that Standard &amp; Poor's has upgraded Celine's bond rating two levels, from A-plus to double-A. This is a very exciting development and indicative that we're headed in the right direction. Part of being good financial stewards is scrutinizing all programs and services to see if there's opportunity for improved cost savings and efficiencies. That's why council decided to take a thorough look at police dispatch, and last year, we explored the idea of merging Celine Parks and Rec with Celine Community Education. Although neither of these discussions yielded structural changes, I have no regret about exploring these ideas. If we don't look at every possibility to improve services and reduce costs, we would be failing the people we represent. For the first time in city's history, we have a fund balance policy which clearly articulates the value of maintaining a healthy fund balance. I'm proud to say that the trend of the last few years has been reversed, and that we are now starting to add to our rainy day fund. We also have a policy that outlines how we will support community events that enrich the lives of our residents. In addition to protecting precious resources that we have, we've also worked hard to leverage new opportunities. As it relates to parks and recreation grant and funding opportunities, as a city, we have not done all we could to take advantage of what's available. That's why I'm proud to announce that we have a new work group created to explore possible funding sources to improve and to enhance our park and recreation programs. I'm very excited about this group's potential. As a community, we continue to be blessed by the high quality of professionals who serve selflessly as police and firefighters. As it relates to the Celine Area Fire Department, I'm proud to say that for the first time in its tenure, we conducted a formal evaluation of our fire chief, which was helpful not only to him, but to the entire department. The Celine Fire Board is very pleased with his leadership and strong community presence. As most of you are aware, our police chief has taken an active leadership role in the Celine Community Substance Abuse Prevention Task Force, as we continue to make great strides to combat substance abuse and addiction in our area. I'm very proud that the task force, with council's blessing, established three subcommittees, prevention, resources, and grants and funding, and I've been overwhelmed by the number of people willing to help. Right now, we are actively recruiting some of the community's young people to get involved, since we believe their perspective will make our efforts all the more effective. City government is also making some big investments in our infrastructure this summer. We have a reconstruction project on North Ann Arbor Street between Bennett and T-Bolt Lane, a major artery in our community that was in desperate need of repair. Another small but visible project will be on Lewis Street, just south of Michigan Avenue. Although every effort is being made to ensure that these projects are completed in a timely manner, there will be some inconveniences to those traveling in the areas for a short time. When the work is finished, though, I'm sure you will appreciate the upgrade. We are also continuing to work on a comprehensive plan to improve our sidewalks. An initiative of this magnitude has not been done in more than 20 years, and as we proceed, you will certainly be hearing more. The city continues to also -- also, excuse me, the city continues to make progress on stabilizing and upgrading our wastewater treatment plant, which accounts for the most substantial investment in that facility and its technology in almost 30 years. Another issue that I've talked about in the past is the need to identify long-term sustainable funding sources for our roads and infrastructure projects. City staff has already -- has been working diligently, excuse me, on this question, and city council will begin to tackle the issue in earnest early next month. Two weeks ago, a meeting including city council, the Celine Chamber of Commerce Board, and the Celine Main Street Board allowed for a robust discussion of economic development and business retention and attraction. One of the most exciting things to come out of this meeting was a new chamber-sponsored work group to explore new approaches to crowdfunding, an exciting tool that is working well in communities across our region. Later this month, we will hold our next luncheon in form with some of our larger industrial businesses to offer the city's assistance and to understand their needs. One of the major topics of discussion will be personal property tax reform, an initiative I strongly support. The current PPT is an antiquated approach, and eliminating it will make our business community more competitive. The Code and Ordnance Review Task Force continues to work hard to strengthen some policies, but also to simplify and remove regulations that may be overly burdensome to businesses and citizens. If business owners or residents have thoughts or suggestions for the task force, they can email the members at CRTtaskforce@cityofceline.org. As a city and as a council, we continue to strive to engage openly and effectively with the people we represent. I strongly encourage residents to reach out to me, my council colleagues, and staff whenever they have a problem or a question. A very useful tool is our See, Click, Fix app, which can be downloaded for free to your phone, allowing you to report problems to city government instantly. With the assistance of the clerk's office, council is continuing to explore new ways to engage with our residents, and there are many volunteer opportunities in this community and in this city specifically. And I've come to believe that the best way to be in the know and to understand the pulse of this community is to be involved. I encourage anyone interested in serving on a city board or commission or on city council to explore that possibility. More information can be found online at cityofceline.org. We are always in need of volunteers for our signature community events such as Summerfest, Oktoberfest, and also the Celine Celtic Festival, which takes place this weekend. It is an outstanding event that has seen substantial improvements in recent years. If you're not volunteering for the festival, I hope to see you at Pub Night on Friday, and welcome you to enjoy all the featured attractions on Saturday. I want to again thank my colleagues on city council for their dedication, and I look forward to working with them in thoughtful and sincere ways to make this community a better place. Mayor Protem Linda Tahar, and council members Liebergoyne, Dean Girbaugh, David Rhodes, Jim Roth, and Terry Sibokanek. Clearly, we have made substantial progress in recent years, but much work continues. I'm excited about this community's prospects, and I continue to believe that Celine's best days are ahead of us. Thank you, God bless you, and may God bless Celine. We come now to the portion of agenda where we entertain and welcome citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and on the minutes of the last meeting, my comment was a surety bond, not a security bond. It says, citizen comment, it was a surety bond.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any other citizen comments on agenda items?
Jean.
Jean Hess, I have one part place. I just have a question about the current compensation for appointed officials. While I don't object to them getting raises, I have a question about why retirees have gotten no cost of living raises in the 20 years since I retired, and the staff continues to get raises. It just seems strange to me that whenever it has come up, council has always decided not to give retirees any increase.
Thank you. Are there any other citizen comments on agenda items? No, then we move on to the consent agenda. I would prefer to make this a little bit simpler, folks. Mrs. Hess, her comments during the citizen comment period are duly noted, and I would hope that we can just make that change in the minutes without objection. So, if there are no objections, I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Roth. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 14-141. This is South Lewis Street Milling and Resurfacing from US 12 to West Henry Street. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 30, 2014 memo from city superintendent engineer Ruble, and to authorize or not authorize the city manager to execute the quotation of $17,063 from Cadillac Asphalt for the South Lewis Street Milling and Resurfacing project.
I move to acknowledge receipt and authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Sibokanek. Mr. Ruble, do you care to comment on your memo at all, sir?
I don't have anything to add to what's there, other than we were very pleased that the contractor would provide an estimate that was certainly within the budget estimate for the project, and it came out quickly, and we were able to obtain a quote quickly and have it done this year within the current unit prices, which were very good.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ruble. Are there any questions for Mr. Ruble? Mr. Rhodes?
Not a question for Mr. Ruble, just a statement that I wanted to make, and that is that I will abstain from discussion or voting on this, since I have some property that abuts South Lewis Street, and I would not want anyone to think that my vote would be self-serving.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, and your comments are duly noted. If there are no further questions for Mr. Ruble, Mr. Ruble, thank you for being here this evening. Is there any subsequent discussion on the motion to acknowledge receipt and authorize? Mr. Girbaugh.
I just want to appreciate to staff finding money in the Tifa contributions that we were able to reduce the amount of contribution out of the general fund for this.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Okay. If there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by Roth, seconded by Sibokanek, to acknowledge receipt and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have one abstention, is that correct, Mr. Rhodes?
Correct.
Thank you. Ayes have it, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Point of order before we get to the next item. I don't believe this resolution supporting proposal one should be voted here or should be here at all. I did send an email on this, questioning this, and asking for this to be postponed until the next meeting, until we find out. Since then, I did call Elections Division, and it is not proper for us to do this, so we should not be doing this. We should not be processing this item.
And you called Election Division where, at Washtenaw County?
Lansing.
And what was articulated as to why this would be inappropriate? And did you receive anything in writing?
Because I did, and I did print it out, but I don't -- I can't find it right now. I did find my memo. I think we should not do this and postpone it, because I don't think we should do something that's not right.
Why don't you, at a minimum, paraphrase the documentation that you have there from the Election Division? Because you're not providing much clarity as to why this would be inappropriate. In fact, your email never indicated that it was inappropriate. You wanted to delay it as a political tactic. Excuse me, to which I responded that that would be unwise, with no disrespect intended, because we would be missing a two-week opportunity to engage with our residents and to articulate why it's important for them to vote on this, especially considering there's a significant number of people who will be voting by absentee ballot and will not be able to hear from us with clarity on this issue. So I would be interested in knowing what this document has to say.
Okay, well, you're not saying what I said correctly, but I will read it to you. It says, "Hi, Brian, since public --" this is July 3. "Since public funds cannot be used for campaigning for or against any ballot question, I assume we have obtained suggested information release wording from the Michigan Municipal League." Now, I think this was before I got my packet. When I got my packet and looked at it this weekend, I decided to call to see whether the packet was proper, which I do not think it is. And the response, I just have my email here, I don't have anything from the Elections Division, but the Elections Division said that you cannot use public funds to say, to tell people to vote against something or tell people to vote for something, whether it's a candidate or ballot question. So, since it's not, since it does say, "We, as a council, strongly support a ballot measure," that would not be right. So I don't want to participate in this.
Okay, well, first of all, you cherry picked, reading what your initial email said. Subsequent to the statement that you read, you said something to the effect of you wanted to delay this to provide more opportunity to promote our position. So you chose not to read that.
No, I'll read it.
I have the floor, I have the floor. You chose not to share that. I have no problem, Mr. Burgoyne, with delaying this resolution and having our attorney take a look at it. However, the language, as the city clerk can attest to, was provided by the Michigan Municipal League. I would hope that in the future, if you had a concern of this nature and you had a conversation with the Election Division, be it at Washtenaw County or at our state capitol, that you would have communicated that to the chair and to staff in advance. However, your point is well taken, and if council would prefer to delay this to make sure that the wording is appropriate and legal, I don't have any problem with that. Okay? So we'll move on to the agenda item, which is 14-142. Would somebody like to make a motion to postpone this item until our next meeting, which would be on July the 17th?
I'll move to postpone.
And I'll second.
Excuse me, I'm looking at the mayor's exchange, I apologize. Mr. Girbaugh, it's moved to postpone to the 21st?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Is there any subsequent discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of a motion to postpone to July 21st signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries. Would you make sure that Mr. Smith has an opportunity to look at that, either he or his colleagues, and get us an analysis by our next meeting?
I think so.
Thank you. We move on to the discussion portion of the agenda. Do we have any commission, committee, or task force reports from city council members?
Historic -- sorry. For recognition, that's all right. As you all know, we had a concern with the historic district in terms of how the interpretation is of what gets inspected and what doesn't get inspected because of the way that building permits are currently issued. And at this last Historic District Commission, and we have a legal opinion from our attorneys now, there is concern that there is a confusion between what the authority is of the board and what is really being reviewed. So, I strongly urge us, and I know that the mayor supported this and has communicated on this, has spoken with the ordinance review, but I think we need to move this up quickly. We recently had two homes where work was done on them, and as a result of the review not being done, historical aspects of those homes were lost. And it's not that we want to put restrictions in place, but I think what happened was, when the building permit were changed, a lot of things fell out, and the historic district wasn't seen as being its own type of entity or whatever. And the biggest concern I have right now is I have members of the commission that feel that we aren't in compliance, that we may fail any kind of audit that's done by the state, which recognizes it. And the other thing is, I have members that are wanting to resign because of this confusion. So, I know we've had concerns in the past, and we've had these quotes that, "We don't want to be like Ann Arbor." Well, honestly, we're not like Ann Arbor, but we are trying to be very considerate to what's happening and what people have done in the historic district. And so we're looking at trying to make sure that the type of review considered that is continuing to happen happens, and so that we don't have a hit and miss, where we may have one individual say that they're going to replace part of their windows, and another one says, "Well, why do I have to have a permit when I don't need it for this?" And it's just really gotten to the point where it's confusing. So, enough of that, but I wanted to let you all know, and I'm hoping that council will take action sooner than later, otherwise we'll have a...
Mr. Girbaugh, may I add in just real quick?
Sure.
And as you probably know, and the rest of my colleagues on the dais know, I believe that Justine Myra in Todd's office sent out a communique about scheduling a meeting with HDC members and city staff to discuss some of these issues. As I see it, there's sort of two issues. One, and this relates to the attorney's analysis that you referenced, we have some contradictory language in our ordinance currently, but in addition, I suspect that, again, this is suspicion at this point, but I suspect that a majority of the historic district commissioners would like to see some additional language added in the ordinance to, I don't know how do I want to phrase this, well, to make, to give them a little bit more authority and ability to preserve the historic integrity of a home and an area. Is that correct?
Not so much that. They want to make sure what they're doing is within the law, and what they're, they want to identify a clarification as to what their overview really is. And because of the way that you look at the state regulations requirements, the way our ordinance is currently written is in contradiction to what the state recommends, so they're feeling that what they're doing is conflicting with what we should be doing or what the state is recommending, and so they're in conflict. And some of them would like to have, but they really just want to know what can they do and what don't they, and they'll let go of that. So it's not so much they want to have more power, and they want to be able to view what their decisions are.
They want clarity.
Are clarity, yeah.
And, you know, I did speak personally to our attorney about this, and he would be, he would welcome the opportunity to work with council, with the HDC. You know, he has worked in a number of communities that have HDCs that have a lot of robust power and HDCs that are pretty weak, but he understands, I think, the importance of doing some cleanup and rectifying these discrepancies. So, I'm very much in favor of your proposal, which is working quickly to rectify these issues.
And usually, we've been really good with all the citizens, everybody has worked really well on this, and this just happened to be an example of where there was just a clarification, and we think it'll be helpful if we can get this done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other commission, committee, or task force reports? I just have one on behalf of the Celtic Festival, just a reminder that the opening ceremony is this Saturday at 11:00 PM. For those of you who requested parking passes, you should have all received them at this juncture. If you haven't confirmed your attendance with me, please do so, especially if you did not receive a parking pass, because I need to put your name on a list at the front gate, so you'll be given access to the park. And I think it promises to be a very exciting festival this year, enhanced and certainly improved. And I encourage my council colleagues and any citizens in the audience or citizens watching to join us for Pub Night on Friday evening, and then for all the festivities and events on Saturday. I do want to note, and I talked to Mrs. Hess about this before the meeting this evening, I was able to confirm last Thursday at our executive board meeting, that all Celine Area seniors will be given free access to the park on both Friday and Saturday. So if you're a Celine Area senior, we encourage you to come out, and you'll be given a free ticket to access all the amenities at Milpon Park. I also have behind me here some Celine Celtic Festival, excuse me, it's a tongue twister, signs promoting the events on the 11th and 12th, and they're not doing us any good downstairs in the Celtic Festival office, collecting dust, so if you have a yard and you'd be amenable to putting one up to help us promote the festival, I would appreciate that, and you're welcome to take them at the conclusion of the meeting this evening. Are there any other commission or committee reports? No, how about reports or other announcements? Mr. Burgoyne.
Well, I have one announcement and one comment. I thank Jean Hess for coming forward, because I think over the years, council now and then has done a little bit for the retirees. Sometimes they pass something, but mostly not. And I think people retired 15 years ago, the value of their retirement check is not the same today. So, I know that Social Security has incremental amounts each year, which seem fair, and they try to get some fairness, and I think, I have to say that I'm a retiree, so I gotta disclose that, but I think fairness, whether you're part of the group, I'm part of the group, but I think fairness for the whole group makes sense to me. But I know I have a financial interest, and I'm declaring that I have such. I wouldn't vote on it, if there were a vote. I do have one other thing, though, announcement. I saw in the newspaper that Celine Area Social Services faces a $75,000 deficit. Now, this, Celine Area Social Services serves the entire school district. They serve Celine Township, Lowdy, Bridgewater, you know, all around Celine, including the city of Celine, but they serve all around. And apparently, United Way's bureaucratic method and the fact that this agency was transitioning to a new type of application for funds caused them to fall between the cracks. And there isn't, it isn't like United Way doesn't know that Social Services is here. They're the main agency providing this variety of services. And I looked at, in the newspaper, at their groups under which they're supposed to apply. They have six community outcomes: early childhood education, seniors, housing and homelessness, health, nutrition, apparently there's another one that's not listed. But it seems as though agencies like Social Services, and since they provide a lot of food to people, they applied under nutrition, and then they were called, "Uh-uh, you applied under the wrong group, so you don't get anything." I think this really is outrageous for the United Way to not have helped them transition better. And that's my personal point of view. They call it coordinated funding process. I would say lack of coordination process, because they didn't help the agencies that were transitioning into this, to get into the right place, to do it right. And so, our Celine Area Social Services for the school district area is out for two-year funding. They're out for two years. Now, I know that United Way has had problems with, you know, some of their executives using too much airfare, there was another time when there was something irregular, somebody buying horse farms down south and so forth. They get bad press for that. Why would they want bad press for this? I mean, it doesn't make sense. It seems as though United Way would want to fix this. Now, I would suggest to Celine Area Social Services that they find maybe an angel like Reddy's Foundation or something, that would put up a matching $40,000 request and challenge United Way, because I know that United Way gets about, gets more than the $4 million that they were distributing there. They get closer to twice that much, and on a lot of the designated funding, they take 15% across the top. If you take 15% of every million dollars, that's $150,000 every million dollars. So I know that United Way has some resources that it could match and help this area of the county. So I'm just very disappointed, I feel it's outrageous that their bureaucratic red tape caused an issue. That's the way I see it.
And that's the way, Mr. Burgoyne, it's been portrayed in some media outlets. I don't want to make this discussion anything long and protracted, but as you are well aware, there are two sides to every story. And if you are that interested in learning about why United Way made the decision that they made, I would encourage you to contact them directly. However, as you may recall, and as my council colleagues will recall, Mr. Campbell has communicated about this issue in his communique on a number of occasions, and I have met personally with the leadership of United Way and with the leadership of Celine Area Social Services. I met with the leadership of United Way, because they have a number of donors and supporters in this community, and since they will no longer be funding Celine Social Services, which was how they invested a significant portion of their dollars in this area, I wanted to make sure... wanted to make sure that they were going to continue to invest in critical areas and support those in need in this community. And I brought some stakeholders around the table in the conference room, Mr. Rhodes was there, and they have earmarked about $40,000 that they're willing to give to initiatives and projects in the Celine community that support those in need. However, at this time, they are not willing and/or interested to fund Celine Social Services. I have had meetings with Celine Social Services. I think I'm having a subsequent meeting with their leadership team on the 21st to try and identify ways in which I can be helpful and that the city can be helpful. And that's one of the reasons why we allowed them space in our most recent FYI newsletter, and I would strongly encourage members of the community who have a few extra dollars and who want to support Celine Social Services to strongly consider making an investment in that organization, because as Mr. Burgoyne points out, they do do a lot for those in need. And this is a very blessed, it's a very affluent community, but there are people who need temporary support and assistance. So that's my perspective on the matter. Very good. And then as it relates, Mr. Burgoyne, to the contracts that our retirees receive and COLA adjustments, I appreciate your comments, Jeanie, Mrs. Hess, we've got two Mrs. Hesses in the audience, so it's a little confusing. I appreciate your comments as well, and I just spoke to the city manager. As my council colleagues know, we're going to be having a meeting, probably in pretty short order, with our labor council to talk about all staff contracts. I think there's also some merit in adding this item to the discussion as well. So please know that it will be discussed in the very near future. Okay? Are there any other reports or announcements? No? We move on to the resolution to set compensation. The clerk actually identified a discrepancy here and wanted to bring this forward this evening, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Royal.
Well, at the last meeting, we had discussed the compensation, and there was discussion on what was published. However, last year, the council went from putting this on an ordinance, the salaries on an ordinance, to putting it on a resolution. And resolutions are not required by law to be published. So I wanted to bring this back to you. In case you wanted this to be published, the resolution would normally look like the last page. It shows the July 1st, 2013 to June 30th, 2014. This would be what the resolution would normally look like within our resolution book, but these are not published, so. And I also wanted to bring up, because it was noted after the meeting, that the motion to set the salaries did not include the asterisks to include the merit pay. So I just wanted to bring this back to get clarification, if you wanted these posted, if you were okay with it being a resolution, or which way you wanted this to be handled.
Maybe you want to elaborate a little bit. And one of the reasons why we changed the policy in 2013 was because the ordinance required updating and approval every year.
Right.
And this process streamlines.
Well, without the salaries being in an ordinance, it does save you from having to change the ordinance, have to republishing the ordinance through the codification process and being published.
So when I spoke to Clerk Royal about this in advance of the meeting, we were sort of looking for consensus on two things. One, I think it's pretty easy to establish that even though per state statute, a resolution doesn't require posting and distribution, obviously, I would suspect it's the consensus of this council to publish and disseminate the material. And then additionally, we wanted clarification. I think it was Mr. Giribao who initially brought this up at a work meeting, which was to include the asterisks denoting merit pay.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
At that same meeting, I suggested that we would include the extra benefits, as like cars and so on. And I didn't get a response one way or the other, but I did bring that topic up, because that is part of compensation.
Okay. So I guess even though there's not a motion articulated on the agenda this evening, I think it's better to entertain a motion as opposed to developing consensus. Obviously, I think the first is the easiest, and it could all be combined into one motion, which would be to disseminate and to share the information regarding staff salaries. I suspect that Mr. Giribao is still in favor of providing an asterisk that denotes merit pay, and Mr. Roth would like to also elaborate on extra benefits, including cars, et cetera.
I'll make the motion to include all of the above.
So, Mr. Burgoyne, your motion would be to disseminate and publish staff salaries, including an asterisk denoting merit pay and any other extra benefits?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Mr. Roth will second that motion? Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Giribao?
I'm fine. No, I'm just trying to say, I mean, I'm fine with just the salaries and the merit aspect, because we're talking about annual compensation. If we're talking about total compensation, it's like a clarification. The way we have it read, it further resolved that annual compensation, that would include everything. I never saw it that way. I've always seen it as annual salary, but I wanted to make sure that the actual annual salary was included, which included that merit.
Right.
So from my perspective, there's a lot of information that, attempting to try and identify that by each individual is going to add a lot of staff to effort, and I'm kind of fine with just doing the salaries as the way they were presented and just going that route. I'm not trying to cover anything up or hide it, but it's a lot of information, a lot of stuff that I think people are more interested in just knowing the salaries. They may want to know about benefits, but we discuss those at separate work benefit issue, work meetings and things like that.
My motion was to put an asterisk next to the ones that are getting the merit.
Right.
To have an explanation at the bottom that says that this is the merit, and that also that the unions get longevity, this is similar to the union longevity.
Okay.
Then the other motion was an indication, in any way that you want it, you can list the positions at the bottom or whatever, on staff cards and so forth that Mr. Roth talked about.
Okay. I share some of Mr. Giribao's concerns. I probably am not in a position where I would vote against the motion. I guess my preference would be, since we're having a work meeting in very short order to discuss staff contracts and compensation, I guess I would be interested at that time adding to the discussion portion of that particular meeting's agenda, how we could disseminate clearly and succinctly all the benefits that are given to employees. But that's my opinion, and like I said, if the majority of council wants to find, you know, wants staff to include those now, I'm certainly not going to...
I'm willing to wait. I don't have a reason to need to do it right now. I'm willing to wait.
Okay.
Just one clarification. I won't support the motion if it includes that comparison of longevity for staff. We discussed that at the last one and said that was merit, not longevity.
Right. Okay. So, Mr. Burgoyne, do you want to modify your motion, then?
No, I think, I'll just withdraw it. I'll withdraw the motion and wait.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne has withdrawn the entire motion, then? Okay. Does anybody want to offer additional motion?
I'll make a motion to publish the salaries with the merit asterisk identification and wait until we have a more clarification about the other benefits. So just make the motion to publish the salaries with the merit asterisk identifying it as such.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second. Any discussion? Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, if you don't say that the union employees are getting something, it doesn't have to be identical, but somewhat similar, then you're not being very clear, so I wouldn't want to be unclear.
Mr. Roth?
I've been all under the understanding, let's be transparent as we possibly can, and I think this is an issue that we should be transparent with.
Yep.
And there's where I'm coming from, and that's the reason I suggested the benefits. And if it's only mentioned that, you could put a double asterisk saying, "Such and such person receives additional benefits," as example, cars, mileage, and that type of stuff. I'd be happy with that. In far as regards comparing it with the other unions, all that needs to be said is that everybody received a 2% raise, because that's what's comparable to what the other unions have, and I think we'd cover ourselves.
And I appreciate your comments about the additional benefits, and I think Mr. Giribao shares the sentiment. That's why I would like to make sure it's discussed at a subsequent work meeting, so we are very clear on how we want that information disseminated, and that, you know, that the people who would be accessing the information, our constituents, could clearly understand what sort of benefits are being provided to each individual employee. So I get that, and I agree. Mr. Rhodes?
My uncertainty at the moment around this motion revolves around the use of the word compensation. Because compensation is, in fact, everything. If that is stated, the annual salary of such appointed officials, then the motion is brought forth by Mr. Giribao, fits.
Did you say salary, Mr. Giribao?
I didn't, but I meant that, I accept that.
Let's actually have her read back, would you?
I have published salaries with asterisks for merit pay.
That's fine.
You're fine with that, and you're fine with moving that, Mr. Giribao?
Yeah, and changing the word in here, so it says the annual, instead of annual compensation, annual salaries.
Annual salaries, okay. Oh, and that's, I think that one was from last year, so yeah.
Any subsequent discussion regarding Mr. Giribao's motion? Mr. Burgoyne?
When we talk about union contracts, I just don't remember saying anything except the annual raise to the wages. I don't remember the discussion of who gets cars, who gets additional benefits, who gets longevity, who gets whatever. I just don't remember that, and I don't like the idea of treating non-union employees differently. I just don't like that. It's not equitable.
Mr. Roth?
I'd like to respond to that.
Please.
Where I'm coming from is that we have the non-union agreements, and these folks receive extra compensation by extra perks or whatever it might be. I'd like to have that kind of under review, in which we made, I made that point at our work session. I don't see where that compares at all with the union contract. We're dealing strictly with this non-union group, and I like to have it kept that way. We try to have parity all along with far as when, if the unions receive the certain wages, the non-union receive the certain wages. So I'm looking at this as a second issue, and we don't make that parity with the unions, because they negotiate their own particular contract. This particular contract I see is with the council and the non-union people, and that is what I'm looking at exclusively.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Roth. If there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote on motion moved by Mr. Giribao, seconded by myself, to publish salaries with asterisks, with an asterisk, denoting merit pay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. That takes care of resolution to set compensation. I want to thank the city clerk for bringing that forward again. Appreciate you acknowledging that discrepancy and working with us to rectify it. Last, but certainly not least, Mr. Fortes, do you want to come up briefly to discuss the new recycling program with Waste Management?
Yes, indeed. Hello. The week of June 23rd, Waste Management and their subcontractors distributed 2,836 96-gallon recycling carts. Following that delivery, we had a few properties that were missed. We had seven properties call in to request a cart, and we had some folks call in saying they did not want to have the cart. So we had 85 residences call either DPW or Waste Management, saying they did not wish to have that cart. And that is just slightly less than 3% of the residences. So just a touch over 97% of the folks are either happy with their cart or tolerating their cart, begrudgingly accepting the cart. So 97% at this point, as of noon today, are holding onto the cart and participating in the new recycling program, and 3% at this point have opted out.
And just to be clear, if a resident decides tomorrow or a week from now, they do not want to accommodate the cart, they do not like the cart, they would prefer not to recycle, that certainly wouldn't be my recommendation to them, the way they get that cart retrieved would be to call the main number at DPW, leave their name and address, and then place the cart by the curb and at DPW's convenience.
Yep.
The cart will be retrieved.
Yep. That's correct. And on the flip side, if anybody who has returned the cart wishes to change their mind and participate in the program, they can follow the same process.
Great.
And we'll get one delivered to them.
Okay. And I just want to note, too, because I spoke to Mr. Fortes about this and Mr. Campbell, and I think I sent out a communique to everyone on council, I have asked staff to investigate the feasibility of maybe identifying a central hub in town for people to recycle, for whatever reason, but mainly due to the fact that they have opted not to keep the cart. I should also note, from a conversation I had with the condo association president, I suspect a large portion of that 85 number came from the Brecken Village condos, where they're simply not able to accommodate that cart in their small garages, and their condo association rules say that they can't have things outside their garage. So that's a real catch-22 situation, which I feel bad about, but...
Yeah. 21 folks from Brecken Village have requested removal. There are 36 units there, so a couple of folks are giving it a try.
Okay. God bless them. Okay. Mr. Roth?
I was just wondering if there's a recommended procedure to dispose of the previous recycled containers.
Good question. Want to comment on that?
If you have another use for it around your house, for gardening or storing any kind of item, you can keep it, or if not, place it inside the new cart, and it'll be recycled.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Fortes? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, could you comment on the discussion we had about maybe parting with your neighbor?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point that I forgot about. A lot of folks are saying that the carts are larger, larger than they need. There's a few folks who are having some difficulty handling them. So one suggestion is to work with your neighbors. If you have one neighbor who has a cart that they fill up halfway, and they can handle it, and you could hold on to your old bin and empty your bin into their cart, because that's another point about the program, the 18-gallon bins are discontinued, they will not be collected any longer. And we have had a little bit of confusion with some of the Waste Management staff, that the drivers, the folks actually out collecting trash and recycling, have miscommunicated that with some citizens. So they, to be perfectly clear, the 18-gallon bins are being discontinued, will not be collected.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fortes. Appreciate your time on this, appreciate your work as well. If there's nothing further, we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Please.
I have another comment. Probably the other 36 are from Park Place, because we also have the same problem. We have one-car garages. In fact, I knocked my mirror again coming out to this meeting. We're just not wide enough to accommodate that bin, and most of us are older, and just a lot of them are giving them back. But I don't see why, if they're going to be manhandling those big bins, why they can't just pick up the little bin and dump it at the same time. We can't keep ours out where they're being seen either, and the same with all of the other, Wildwood and the different ones that only have one-car garages. It just, I don't see the reasoning, that I don't think anybody took it into consideration about the elderly people or one family. I can see a four-person family needing that big bin, but a one-person family, the little bin works fine, I mean, even for two weeks sometimes. But to tell these people, "Well, just don't recycle." I've been recycling very long, and it really grinds me that I either have to take it to some other location or just dump it all in the trash. I don't want to do that. And I thought there was something in the minutes or something about, here a few weeks back, about Celine not recycling up to what they used to in the beginning. Maybe it was the county. I thought it was the city. But you're just reducing it that much more by... But you're just reducing it that much more by telling these people, well, just dump it in the trash.
Thank you. And just to be clear, Jeanie, and we appreciate the comments, the larger trash receptacles is something that Waste Management is transitioning to, because at some point, they hope to have it all mechanized, where it's the equipment, the technology that's lifting up the cart, not a human being. But your point is very well taken. In fact, I believe both myself and Mr. Burgoyne and maybe some other council members shared similar concerns when this proposal was first brought to us. As a single person, I prefer the smaller container. It's just that they are, you know, discontinuing that and opting for something larger. Well, appreciate the compliment. The other, Mrs. Hess.
My comment, as I was asked at the last meeting, what the percentage of benefits were on top of the salaries. And I think they're 30-some percent, which is a pretty good deal on over $100,000. You put 30%, and I was still asked, what is the percentage of benefits for the non-union people? The other thing is, as far as the recycle things, if we could possibly, I know I had a problem with it at first, but hopefully, we'll be able to come up with some type of thing. And as far as the United Way, the school district is 100 square miles, and I agree that there should have been some help or some kind of communication prior to the refusal or some type of working with, because that's a lot of money that has been cut out of the locals' share. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Please, Commissioner Ping.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Alicia Ping, your county commissioner. And just a couple of things, nothing major. The Board of Commissioners, it's summer, so we only meet once a month now, but a couple of things I wanted to just to bring to your attention is, through the work we did the last year, the county has now received a AAA bond rating, so we've been able to refinance some of our bonds, save some money. We're one of only two counties in the state that have AAA ratings, so kind of excited about that. Also, Act 88 Millage, you may or may not be familiar with it. It's a countywide millage, and prior to this year, it was .05 mills that were assessed. This year, it's .07. There was a task force that was created after that millage increase happened to address the extra funds that would be available. So it was about $165,000, $150,000 was, is available for grants. The RFP, or the submission time has now passed. There will be discussion on those grants tomorrow. Act 88 is meant to fund economic development or agricultural activities, promoting agricultural activities. So, and then there was $15,000 kind of slush money with no deadline, but something that we would be able to provide a small, matching mini grant. So anything from $1,000, and we had up to 15,000 to use. So there are a couple of communities who have tried to tap into that money so far. I just wanted to let you know that it was out there. Next year, it's going to be completely different. In the past, we had a set dollar amount, like $250,000 went to Spark, $100,000 went to, or $50,000 went to Aerotropolis. It was a very structured, next year, it's not structured at all. It will all be grant-based. So I would just say, keep in mind for next year, for Main Street or economic development activities or help promoting, you know, brochures, whatever you need, that that money will be available next year, and it'll be available on a grant basis. So, and then also, you can communicate with me now or later, but there's been some talk, and it's currently, a committee has been assigned for a countywide road millage. So the road commission can't raise their own dollars, so there's been discussion whether the county should pass a millage. And then for the communities that have their own, or DPWs that take care of their own roads, how that money would come back to them, whether it would come back at 100% or whether they would be able to have part of that money go to roads and have part of it for non-motorized pathways. So a whole lot of discussion happening around that. So you might want to think about, I think one mill was passed around as a discussion point. So some communities are highly in favor and some are not. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for your work and your leadership. Any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Please.
On the Celine Area Social Services not getting the United Way funds, but 40,000 possibly being made available, what local agencies would that relate to? Do we know yet, or it's not disclosed yet?
Well, it's not so much that it's not disclosed yet, it obviously hasn't been determined, and we're in the infancy of discussing what would be appropriate and what would qualify. I can tell you, when I convened a stakeholders meeting that consisted of representatives from United Way and Washtau County Economic Development, who assist in the distribution of these funds, also around the table was city staff, city manager Campbell, city treasurer Bennett, council member Rhodes was there. I invited representatives from three of our larger faith communities, St. Andrews Catholic Church, Keystone Church, and the First United Methodist Church. I believe only Pastor Tuttle from United Methodist was able to attend. And then also Brian Puffer from Celine Area Schools and Rena Chemin, the executive director of Celine Social Services. So those were some of the entities that participated.
Senior center.
Senior center, excuse me, I don't know what I said. My fopah. In theory, all of those entities could potentially qualify for some sort of support or funding, but if there were other individuals or groups that we thought there was merit in including in those dialogues and discussions, I would be happy to invite them to one of our subsequent meetings. If there's nothing further, we have our mayor's exchange, our follow-up mayor's exchange, excuse me, next Thursday, the 17th, we are going to the city of Whitehall. I believe Clerk Royal sent an email today to discuss logistics, so please consider that. Then we have a work meeting at 6:30 on the 21st to discuss streetscape, and then a regular meeting at 7:30. And then on August 11th, a work meeting that's tentative, but will not be tentative, we'll be discussing our financial picture, specifically bonding for murder's liability, but more importantly, infrastructure funding. That'll be at 6:00, and then a regular meeting at 7:30. We've already excused the absence of Mayor Protam Tahaar, so I would seek a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:29 PM.
Motion to second.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaw, and seconded by Councilmember Burgoyne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. As have it. This meeting's adjourned.